Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is our custom at this time, we have a moment of silence in which we reflect upon those who are serving, who have served, and who will serve our country in foreign lands, as well as those who passed and made the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you very much. I believe that our meeting starts with an award presentation from Toxic Use Reduction Institute.
That's correct.
Okay, I'd like to ask you to come forward.
Good morning.
Hi.
Have a seat. You can join us at the table.
Yes.
Would you introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Jan Hutchins, and I'm with Toxic Use Reduction Institute, also known as TURIE, and I'm happy to be here today representing the Massachusetts Toxic Use Reduction Act program, which is a somewhat larger program, and to present an environmental leadership award to Cape Cod Cooperative Extension. Mike McGuire of the Extension is going to provide a little additional information later, but I'll provide some basic background for you. The TURIE at UMass Lowell and the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension began a partnership through a community grant in 2007. The Extension began their Stop the Flare Up in Water Contamination project in an effort to educate emergency response personnel and boaters about the hazards of the emergency flares that they were using. Those flares contain a chemical called perchlorate, which can contaminate water and can also cause adverse health effects, specifically health effects to the thyroid. Part of the project was to implement some safer alternatives to chemical flares, and this project was undertaken due to the contamination of Cape Cod's sole source aquifer by perchlorate through improper storage and disposal of chemical flares. The Extension was able to use our grant money, it was just a small matching grant, to get the alternative flares to emergency response personnel. And that way, the police and fire could see for themselves how well the alternative LED flares worked in comparison to the chemical flares. One reason the Extension is being recognized today is that their project really exemplifies what our community grant program is about, that they effectively use a very small matching grant to help local communities find solutions to environmental health and safety issues. And the ultimate goal, of course, is creating healthier, more environmentally stable communities. As part of the project, the Extension created educational materials so that others will be able to replicate the work that was done. Those materials include a video, great video, you can find that on YouTube, you can find it on the TURIE website, and I think you can find it on some of the sites for the flare companies as well, I think I've seen it there. I now would like to introduce Janet Clark, who is Senior Associate Director at TURIE, and she's going to say a few words about our 20th anniversary leadership tour. Cape Cod Extension is one of only 17 companies that's being recognized throughout the Commonwealth.
Before you start, I wonder if you might share with the viewers something about your organization so they have a better sense of what exactly your history and what you've been doing.
Thank you very much, and we're very pleased to be here. The Toxic Use Reduction Act was voted into law with unanimous votes of both houses of the legislature 20 years ago, after about a year of negotiations between stakeholders, that would be the environment community and the business community, both of whom compromised and were very creative, and have created a law that still stands as one of the more successful and looked at laws in the world. Some of my colleagues have been invited to Scotland, I've been invited to Buenos Aires. Ontario has just promulgated a law which they call the Toxic Use Reduction Act Law, something like that, Rachel would know. Australia has been interested. The law requires that companies look at their toxic use in a systematic way and to report. It does not require them to reduce toxics, and the government is required to provide training and information and research and technical assistance. 20 years later, companies have chosen for business purposes, after looking at the issue, to reduce toxic use. The data say that we have reduced toxic use in the state of Massachusetts in companies that file by 40%, which is phenomenal, by 40%. And emissions have been reduced by about 90%, which is one of the top performance measures in the nation. Obviously, it's the companies that are doing this, and so we have been this year honoring companies that are top performers and hearing some of the most wonderful stories about their experiences with toxic use reduction, whether it is the teams they have formed and the way they are working in their companies to connect the details of production to business decisions, which they had not done before at this level. Increased efficiency, cost savings that are really pretty amazing, the reduced compliance load, and increased safety for workers and for the environment. And access to markets that have emerged, the green markets in Europe and Japan, which are significant markets. Our companies have been poised to be on the front line of preferred trading partners because of their green performance. But we've also heard company officials, owners, who have been part of these presentations talk about how this law brings together their concern for community with their concern for business in a way that nothing else they've done does. So they're doing this for the right reason. The law created a program that has also served communities, and that's what you're hearing about today. And I hope you'll look at our website to see the over 60 stories of the community grants across the state. They're just amazing.
Can you share with the viewers what your website is?
turi.org, www.turi.org. When you click on the community button, you can find those. There's also literature at the back. So I'm thrilled to be here today, and I look forward to hearing the story from the project proposals.
And if Mike McGuire, Community Educator, is that your title? We've got Cooperative Extension.
I have many titles. The hazardous least guy for the county, how about that?
Okay, that sounds like a good title. If you could just speak for a couple minutes about some of the details of the project, and I believe you're thinking of...
Great, absolutely. So I have some show and tell because I'm a visual person, so this will help. Flares, when we talk about flares, a lot of people don't know what the heck I'm talking about until I pull out something like this, a signal flare, or a rocket-propelled flare, or a boating flare, this is unarmed, that you can use to signal if you're in distress. We also have some other flares that are commonly used on roads. These are called fusils. Fire departments, police departments use these regularly, as well as just regular citizens who want to be able to signal that they've broken down. These products, some of which are mandated by federal law, especially for boating vessels that are over 16 feet, are good visual ways to indicate that you're in distress. But 99.99% of all boaters are never going to use these even though they're required to have them. What does that mean? It means they all have to go somewhere, and where that somewhere used to be was a little unclear. So those flares contain perchlorate. The flares were improperly disposed, we end up with perchlorate in our groundwater. Massachusetts was the first state in the country to establish a groundwater tolerant level for drinking water. Now, our lab here in the county and all the groundwater testing labs in the state are required to test for perchlorate. So what did that mean for the county? That meant that with the TURIE grant, the county could set up a collection program. We have flares collections in every town on Cape Cod. We have a list of where those can be found at the Cape Cod Cooperative Extension website. And we now collect, last year, we collected 3,154 flares in the Commonwealth. The average flare is good for about three and a half years. You can look at flares that look absolutely pristine. This one looks like it's brand new. This expired over 11 years ago. So even though they look good, they do expire rather quickly. The other big user of flares are first responders, police and fire. I've asked a representative from both police and fire to be here today, Lieutenant Exarios from the Yarmouth Police Department, and Chief Farrington from Center of LaSteville Marsden Mills. If you guys wouldn't mind coming up and just explaining how a fusil used to interact in your safety protocol and kind of where you're at now with some of the newer technologies, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. And thank you for recognizing our troops at the beginning of today's meeting, it means a lot to me.
I was one of them once.
Thank you for your service. You are exactly right, this is the type that we typically use, they're a little bit longer, and they're in the trunks of all the cruisers, and we still have them. Because buying the new items, there's a cost to that. So how the grant started and how you helped us, that was great. We just could use some more. We have 34 cruisers, so we want to have a bunch in each car. But typically, at a crash scene at night, you want to warn the drivers who are coming on that there's a crash, so you put out these flares. The problem with these flares from the police angle is we have had officers burned because you have to light them, put them on the ground. So we burned officers by accident, they burned their clothing. They're very expensive to purchase, but even more expensive to ship because it's hazardous material, and to ship them from where we buy them is almost more than what they cost. So these are going out the door, and the way to go, we feel, is with this. So our goal is to have a stack of these in each cruiser, and they can be mounted in the trunk, and when there's a crash, you can put these out. The great thing is, there's no danger, and they're reusable. With these, you use them, you light them, they last for about 20 minutes, and typically, once we clear, if we need more, we light more. If you're there for three hours, you're going to use a whole bunch. And then we just leave, to be honest, and they sit there. And wherever they go, is the other part of the story. So this is the way to go. We use them in our cruisers, we just need more to make them more effective, and we're working on ways to purchase more. And I can tell you that we would like to see these no longer in use for our police department.
So, yeah, and those are great because they have all different signal abilities.
Yeah, they're pretty cool to show off, too, you know? Yeah, so they have different patterns, and the battery lasts for 10 years, very simple. And depending on the scene, you would use, you know, five or six as they approach. We also use them on our traffic cones, so those green cones. They used to be orange, but now the green color is better. We'll stick one on top, or inside, and it makes the whole cone light up. So there's all kinds of ways to use these, and I'm sure there's other brands, but these are the ones that we use, and we find them very good. They can be run over, they can be, they're pretty durable, absolutely, works out very well.
How much are the apiece?
We actually have a person.
Sorry. Do you have any other questions? Police angle, I'll be right here if you need anything.
In Yarmouth, for example, where would someone dispose of the other flares?
Every town's different. In Yarmouth, you can bring them either to the fire department on Old Main Street, or you can bring them to the residential drop-off area at the transfer station. So they collect them in both areas there. And Chief Farrington, he actually has a collection site, so he can talk a little bit about...
I think we've been participating about four years since the program started, and we do get a lot of flares. We're appreciative of the county, both the flare pickup program, and Mike comes over quite often to get quite a load, and we're also participating in the needle program, which is very, very popular. But today, we no longer use road flares what we use, we're into the cones, and the big high cones with the reflective tape is what really makes the big difference. And I know the county is, in the past, we did have problems in the past, we used those extensively at the fire school to light all our fires. We no longer do that because of the problem they found over there. So we're appreciative of the program, and we support it, and it's a big success.
And I might add that at the situation you're talking about, it did take quite a while to clean that up. It is cleaned up, and, you know, we finally got out of it, but it was, you know, the thought is that if it doesn't go into the water table, you don't have to figure out how to get it out of there.
Prevention is the key to it, and like I said, no one ever knew that there was a problem, that we used them everywhere, and that was the easiest way to light a fire. Now we've gone over to propane torches.
And I believe it was more expensive in the cleanup as it is in the front end in obtaining these materials, so like everything else, the prevention measure is more...
If you're familiar with how to dispose of it, I spent a fair amount of time with the power points, and, you know, a gallon, you know, to get rid of a gallon of material is about 10 times, sometimes 100 times more expensive than buying the gallon material you need.
It's just, it's a learning process, and I can remember, I've been associated with the fire school since back in the 60s, and there was a big write-up from NMPA about how great our fire school was, that what they did with the fuel and everything, and went into that Cape Cod sand, you never had to worry about it, and, you know, just so naive back in the 50s and 60s of, you know, groundwater contamination. But the excellent program that Mike has going, and we're glad to support it.
And I'd like to make a point, too, I really appreciate the honesty, too, about the past history of where flares have been, because, believe it or not, this program, the Flares Collection Program, is the only one I'm aware of in the country. So, you know, this is something that TURRI funded, to allow us to lead the way in this, and we're hoping that other communities are going to jump on board, because every community in the country uses flares. Now, if we're the only ones collecting them, what does that mean about the rest of where these flares are ending up? So, you know, we're trying to move forward and hopefully pull on the rest of the state and country with us.
Excellent. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a certificate. And we have to take pictures of all of this.
Why don't we just talk together? I'd quite appreciate it if I get to be here too. And the commissioner, you're the one that funded the program.
Oh, do we ever miss a photo?
Come in here, fellas. So you're carrying it out all the time. Okay, the certificate reads Cape Cod Cooperative Extension for demonstrating environmental leadership by reducing toxic chemical use in municipal and emergency applications resulting in safer communities and protecting the groundwater. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Very good.
All right.
Maybe we could just get one picture where everybody's looking towards the camera.
Stomach in, chest out?
It's a reverse for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all right. Thank you. Back to work.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good morning.
Thank you again, sir.
Thanks, Ray, thanks so much, good to see you.
Ma'am?
Good to see you.
I'll be dropping you off.
Thank you, Bill.
Nobody ever did answer how much those things cost.
I'd like to read it.
We'll use them back, okay.
I wanted to catch speed before he leaves, but, so basically, the bottom line on the financing or pricing or whatever is that per beacon, there's two different prices. One is $49, and that's for the yellow, which is the amber, and the red, those are the, they use less energy. The blues and the whites use more energy, they're $10 more, and there's an infrared, which is also $10 more. Those are usually used by, like, the FBI, the infrared, or the police officers. There's usually no need for those to be used anywhere else, and it's illegal for a typical consumer to use the blue, the blue-red combination especially, because those are legal colors.
When we lived in Europe, and we owned a car, we had to have a kit in the car that had that triangle on it.
Oh, yeah.
A caution thing, that we have, if we broke down, we have to put it so many feet away from the vehicle. Is it your intention to have something like that here?
Exactly. Well, the reason I'm here, I'm Maureen Ellis, by the way, I live in Purcellville, Virginia. The reason why I'm here is to gather information, and because, as Mike said, this is the only Commonwealth that I know of, or actually the only state in the United States that has this collection program for the environment, and I'd like to carry this program to the Commonwealth of Virginia and be able to be an educator for starting the counties especially close to me and then branching out to the entire state of Virginia. I just need the verbiage, I need the information, but I represent PowerFlare, and there's only four distributors worldwide that I know of that offer, you know, and this is in keeping with the equal opportunity, because there's a couple of other lights, too, and they're awesome programs for, I mean, there are some lights for any program, and, you know, but there's such a need that, you know, PowerFlare is just a little dent in the bucket. All the companies are needed, and so...
In terms of promoting your product, the National Association of Counties has a meeting this July in Reno where all of the county officials are brought together, and there's a trade show piece of it. In Virginia, you might go to your state association of county officials, and that might be one way in Virginia to get, you know, to get your message across to the other folks living in Virginia.
Yeah, I need to take a note on that. But, you know, in fact, for anybody that's interested, I did bring, whether it's PowerFlare or any of the other beacons, when you're doing your educational and information output to the different counties, we have actually a breakdown of the break-even point, which really is 10 hours for, the break-even point is 10 hours when you're usually using traditional fusil flares as opposed to the lifetime product. So, but...
I think you have to go beyond, you know, beyond the, was it the break-even point? Because this is keeping things from going into the groundwater.
Well, we have that, too, it's all in there. We have a very simple-to-read, three-page education, little packet.
One thing I'd like to say, people hear toxics and they hear the chemical name, and they think, well, that's those crazy people, but perchlorate affects the thyroid. And what that means is that your developmental stages of the fetus, the infant, the child, the adult are altered. It's a very, very powerful area of the body to be, you know, to have it to be affected, so...
I don't know if you're aware of it, but the military reservation here on the Cape had severe problems, you know, with that, and there's an ongoing program, which I hope is getting near the end, where they're actually sterilizing all of the dirt and putting it back in because of dumping of jet fuel as well as discovering perchlorate, you know, that was found in it. So on Cape Cod, at least, I think we're well aware of the seriousness of intruding toxic material of this type, you know, into our soils.
Well, you are now model leaders.
Well, that's amazing, that's a congratulations. I mean, and I didn't know about the thyroid issue, so it's just all the more reason.
And just so you'll know, a couple of years ago, when its predecessor, Merrill Lopes, was working at the Cooperative Extension, we did do several programs, we have cable-access programs at the county charter. We did have Ron, when we were initiating the program of getting rid of road flares, you know, publicizing the fact that we were collecting, and of course, it wasn't, you know, as organized as, you know, as what Mike is doing now, but at least it was some effort and attempt on our part, you know, to be proactive with the public so they would be able to get rid of what they had, and we were making recommendations on, you know, on different types of alternatives.
Well, thank you, thank you for all your work.
Very much, Ray.
Great, good to meet you.
It's good to meet you, too. What's your name?
Sheila Lyons.
Yeah, I'm going to take back this information to my county because I want to find out how the folks can get grants so that they can start replacing and financing, and, you know, I'm not sure what the program, I'm really kind of brand-new to this, but not new to instantly catching on to the whole concept. That's, you know, I'm an old Yankee, sort of, so I have, oh, I'm from here, but I live in Purcellville right now.
Where is Purcellville?
That is in northern Virginia, close to Dulles Airport.
Fairfax County?
Yeah, well, I'm Loudoun County.
Loudoun, okay.
That's our sister county.
Either one of those, especially Fairfax County, they may have a very active program on environmental protection, as well as energy efficiency.
NACO, that's National Association of Counties.
And this is the meeting that's going to be in July?
That's will be in July, but talk to your Virginia State Association of Counties, because they will be able to give you some guidance as to how to get this information out to the other county officials in Virginia.
Okay.
Then, of course, if you go onto naco.org, that will give you, you know, give you references to the kinds of things that, you know, that NACO does.
I appreciate it.
Good luck with that.
Because, you know, I just thought it was, you know, we went to this expo at Washington Convention Center, and, you know, that was my first introduction into really, you know, educating myself and hearing about it. We had already, you know, signed on to become distributors, but I just learned so much, and I've learned even more here, so...
Good, well, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you. Excited. Good, thank you, good luck. And I didn't get to meet you personally.
By the way, have you had a chance to look at some of your...
Yes, I looked at this last night.
Would you be willing to...
I would be willing to.
Okay, I'll second him, hold on a favor.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
That's done.
And sat sign.
Okay, thank you.
Is the assembly meeting today?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and... For the business...
Well, there is a couple of things I would like to take up, sir. I'll be looking for the video. Mr. Vice Chair, yesterday at the Water Collaborative, which I was unable to attend because I was attending a meeting in Boston, however, there has been an overwhelming response to our request of adding selectmen to the board and changing the makeup of that. So yesterday, Sims Bedad from Orleans was there, David Bedad from Provincetown was there, and Florence Selden will be coming from Chatham, and I think that Peggy Fantozzi sees the, after the presentation and after where the collaborative is heading, really in the educational and fiscal strategies for the communities and how the selectmen are there, she is going to her board and suggests that they also assign a selectman because she does see the rationale in this approach. So that is all good news, and that is all moving forward. The collaborative is going to be having a forum or a, you know, on May 5th, and so all of that is moving forward. And that's, I believe it's the Cape Cod Community College, is it? I have to look at the, I almost saw the notice of the date.
Would that be on the collaborative website?
That will be on the collaborative website, and we can give further notification of that.
Would you be kind enough to, when all of these appointments are finished and you've reorganized, you know, in their places, would you suggest to the collaborative that they send a letter of appreciation for those who have served?
They are, they have, as a matter of fact, they are doing a collective where all of the members are signing and thanking people for their service, and also, it is, I think it would be a good time, Mr. O'Brien's appointment is up at this point, and I think it would be time for us to review that, and since he is really away more than not, and he's had personal issues, no, I don't believe he was. So I think that it's something that we should, you know, take a look at, and the other bit of news...
We wouldn't want to delay the progress that's, all this progress that's being made.
Right, and the other bit of...
Should we advertise for...
No, I believe that there are some people that, you know, have come forward, would appreciate that nomination, so we can discuss that.
Well, I think, though, that in the interest of transparency, that perhaps we should make people aware that that appointment would be available. people aware that that appointment would be available.
Would be open, yes.
And that using this medium, if, and perhaps, I think there's a requirement that we advertise.
Yeah, well, then, that's fine. Then we should do that, and, but we can send that letter forward. Also, I met with officials, I'm sure you read the paper this morning, with NSTAR and that situation that I had reported to you last week that we had some compensation.
They allege that they're not going to spray.
Yes, yes, there has been, yes. In principle, we had an agreement that, we have all agreed in principle, that to take a year further to extend the YOP for another year would give them time to work with the Cape Cod Commission so that the commission can do complete mapping of the wellheads throughout the Cape. We have test wells on the outer Cape right now, so we can get water samples, and the Department of Agriculture is willing to help us get those test samples completed so that we have a baseline now. NSTAR hasn't sprayed for a year out in the outer Cape. It has been just about a year.
Just so we'll be clear, when you say that USDA is, who are they coordinating with within the community? Which one of our departments?
It was, it was myself and Paul Nizwiki of the Cape Cod Commission that, this group, yes. It is. And they will be working with, it will be going through the Cape Cod Commission where they will be doing all of the mapping.
So they have...
So it's an understanding that this is a good way to go, and I do want to just commend NSTAR for coming forward. They do, they have a good program in place. It just takes several years for it to be established. And in the heat of the moment, and when people's fear has been heightened about water, and when they are coming at the big corporation, and the big corporation is hearing all of that, I will, Mr. Darty, I think that nobody really is having the conversation that needs to be had. And I think that, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and in this meeting, I think that we were able to see that they do want to use best practices. They want to, they have many employees on the Cape.
What do you recommend is the next action?
Well, the next action is that they are working out a letter now together. And the Cape Cod Commission and NSTAR is writing a letter of agreement of how they will go forward, and that should be ready next week.
Okay.
So I just want to give you an update on that.
Very good.
Gee, thanks for your, thanks for the time to be able to say that. And that's about it.
Okay. Is there no further comment?
Yes, we can temporarily adjourn in recess to when we reconvene at the, I make a motion to recess and reconvene at the Assembly of Delegates this afternoon. From whence we will adjourn.
Hold on a favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Before, go.